Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Board of Health Meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019. I will call the meeting to order. I think it's like 6:02. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being video and audio recorded, computer cable broadcast, and also on YouTube. So if everyone mind, please stand and join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt? How are you doing? Good. Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Since it is shortly after 6:00 PM, we will open the hearing for the appeal of 3147 Sharp Sot Road. If Mr. Tennis wouldn't mind reading the notice that was sent, please.
3147 Sharp Sot Road, Dayton, Massachusetts. Notice of violations, determination, immediate danger, and order to vacate. The owner occupants of the above referenced property, a site inspection was conducted by the Dayton Health Department in Dayton, but Dayton Health Department on September 30th, 2019, at the premises located 3147 Sharp Sot Road. The site inspection revealed that six campers are located on the property. Five of the campers are being occupied and are clearly arranged in a manner of good privacy between the campus occupants. One of the occupied campers had a fence around it. The occupant of that camper indicated that the fence was installed to protect his belongings. The campers all appear to be occupied by tenants, as all persons present during the inspection indicated that they paid Mr. Clifford Wilson rent to stay on the property. It was unclear who owned the campers. There are no permits on record, but the town of Dayton authorizing the property to be used as a campground or any allowance for campers to be used as living space. There are no permits for either of the above grade or the subterranean electrical infrastructure to energize said campers, nor any permits for the water and sewage discharge infrastructure as required by state codes. All the campers being occupied had sewage discharged directly onto the surface of the ground via sewage hoses of varying sizes. The dog was also witnessed on the property. Town clerk's office does not have any record of the dog being licensed on the property. Following violations of the State Sanitary Code 105 CMR 410 were detected at 3147 Sharp Sot Road. Number one, 105 CMR 410 180, potable water. Water supply for the campers is unknown, not approved by the Board of Health. This is a violation of 105 CMR 410 180, which requires in part that the owner shall provide for the occupant of every dwelling, dwelling unit, and rooming unit. The supply of potable water sufficient in quantity and pressure to meet the ordinary needs of the occupant, connected with the public water supply system or with any other source that the Board of Health has deemed does not endanger the health of any potential user. The quantity, pressure, and source of the water supply on the campus is unknown to the Dayton Health Department in violation of the requirements of 105 CMR 410 180. Failure to provide safe water as determined by the Board of Health is a condition that may endanger the health or safety and well-being of a person or persons occupying the premises. See 105 CMR 410.750. Number two, 105 CMR 410.300, sanitary drainage system required. The sanitary drainage system for the campus is not connected to a sanitary drainage system approved by the Board of Health as it is required by Title V of the State Environmental Code. This is a violation of 105 CMR 410.300, which requires in pertinent part, the owner shall provide a sanitary drainage system connected to the public sewage system provided, that if because of distance or ground conditions, connection to a public sewage system is not practical, the owner shall provide and shall maintain a sanitary, in a sanitary condition of means of sewage disposal, which is in compliance with 310 CMR 15.00, subsurface disposal of sanitary sewage, Title V. The failure to provide sanitary sewage disposal in compliance with Title V of the State Environmental Code is a violation of 105 CMR 410.300. Failure to provide a sanitary sewage disposal system in compliance with Title V of the State Sanitary Code is deemed to be a condition which may endanger the health or safety and well-being of a person or persons occupying the premises. See 105 CMR 410.750. Additionally, the following violations of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Sections 137a and 145b, were detected at 3147 Sharp Sot Road. Number three, Chapter 140 Licenses, Section 137a, registration and licensing of dogs. The owner or keeper of a dog over the age of six months shall obtain a license for the dog. The registering, numbering, and licensing of the dog shall be conducted in the office of the licensing authority in the city or town in which the dog is kept. Number four, Chapter 140 Licenses, Section 145b, a vaccination makes rabies certification tag, proof of vaccination exemption penalty. Each owner or keeper of a dog, cat, or ferret that is six months of age or older shall cause such a dog, cat, or ferret to be vaccinated against rabies by a licensed veterinarian using a licensed vaccine according to the manufacturer's directions, and shall such dog, cat, or ferret be revaccinated in intervals recommended by the manufacturer. Order that campers located on the property at 3147 Sharp Sot Road are condemned, and the occupants thereof are ordered to vacate immediately. The campers shall not hereafter be occupied. A copy of this notice shall be served upon each affected occupant and the owner of the premise in accordance with 105 CMR 410.830. Any person requests to be heard with respect to the findings herein made by the Board of Health must submit a written request for a hearing to the Board of Health within seven days after being served for this notice. Failure to comply with this notice will constitute further action for the courts as needed. Town of Dayton Board of Health, signed Chairman Tom J. Fire.
I have a few, excuse me, I have a few items I'd like to read into the record of correspondence back and forth between the Board of Health, Attorney Mitchell, and Attorney Costa. The first one is from Attorney John R. Mitchell dated October 8th, 2019, to the Board of Health, Town of Dayton, regarding Clifford Wilson, 3147 Sharp Sot Road, Dayton. Notice of violations, determination of immediate danger, and order to vacate. Dear Sir or Madam, on behalf of my client Clifford Wilson, I send this letter as an appeal of the enclosed notice of violations served on Mr. Wilson on October 3rd, 2019 by Constable. If there is further information needed to make this appeal, I ask that you let me know. Otherwise, Mr. Wilson is hereby appealing all orders and conditions in that correspondence. Clifford Wilson, by his attorney, John R. Mitchell Esquire. The next correspondence was on Friday, October 18th, that we have, and it's from Attorney Costa to the Board of Health. Good morning. I spoke to Attorney Mitchell again this morning. He said his client is out of town and not available to open the gate today, which was a Friday. He said that he and his client will be at the property on Monday morning, and will cooperate at that time with opening the gate so that the town can serve notices of the hearing on the occupants of the trailers. Next correspondence was on the same day, October 18th. This is from Matthew Costa to the Board of Health. I'm writing to confirm, I'm sorry, it was to John Mitchell, from Matthew Costa to John Mitchell, CC Board of Health. Dear Attorney Mitchell, I am writing to confirm per our telephone conference this morning that you and your client will be at the above referenced property on Monday morning, and that your client will provide access to the property for the purpose of allowing the Board of Health to have notices served on the occupants of the trailers of the hearing scheduled for Wednesday, October 23rd. The next bit of correspondence is from Monday, October 21st. It's from Attorney John Mitchell to Attorney Matt Costa. It reads as follows. Attorney Costa, I just left you a voice message that Mr. Wilson asked that the town not appear at his property today to give notices to the RVs. His longtime companion is and has been ill because of the last entry by the town on the property, and he and his family are concerned about her health and the effect that another entry will have on it. October 21st, again, from Attorney Costa to Board of Health. Good morning. I received a call this morning from Attorney Mitchell stating that his client is not going to provide access today to notify the trailers. The Board of Health should go forward with the hearing on Wednesday. And that's where we're up to that. All understood, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to begin by asking Mr. Wilson a question, if you don't mind. Mr. Wilson, are you the property manager or a tenant?
Both.
Or the owner?
Both, property manager and tenant.
Okay.
Yeah, he's not the owner. It's owned by a corporation, and he has no interest in the corporation.
Sharps LRZ LLC?
Yeah, the Delaware Corporation.
Now, you as a tenant or a renter, whatever you may be, have a right to tell us your concerns this evening. We did receive the green return receipt from Sharps L. Ozzy on October 7th.
Where was that sent to?
That just went to Sharps. You can take a picture.
Yeah, hold on. I saw it in the plot file. So it went to Delaware?
I didn't sign for anything.
No, it went to Delaware. That must be...
That's the owner of the...
Yeah, that must be one of those corporate places where everyone uses it and they sign for it, so.
Can you explain how that works, though? You manage the company for this corporation?
Yeah. He manages the property and lives there.
Yeah. The property. Rhonda Del Santo was on the corporation and Paul Pereira.
Paul Pereira is the owner of the corporation?
He's one of the, it's an LLC, so there's two members. One is Paul Pereira, and then Rhonda Del Santo was also...
Fortunately, because of the financial hardship I was put under, because of the town, with some foot dragging, I'll say, with my attempt to do a subdivision for many years. And I would thank this hearing for getting this going so quickly. I just wish that we'd done this with a subdivision so quick. I wouldn't be here today. But anyhow, because of the financial situation I was put in, because the town just wouldn't allow me at every turn to do a subdivision, and it took Attorney General's law for the estate law to come through for me to get any relief, and it was too little, too late.
Well, yeah, that's another matter. It's a financial matter, which is not relevant. I own a planning board also.
Well, you were asking me my opinion, my concerns. That was one of my major concerns.
But it is owned by someone else. Mr. Wilson's a tenant, and he does take care of the property.
And the owner is aware that there are people residing in campers?
I wouldn't admit to that fact right now, because they're not residing in campers. There was one, should I get into it at this point?
Well, they're gonna ask you.
Yeah.
There's some campers that, there's only four campers on the property.
Two have been removed since.
Yes, one was...
Since we were there?
Yeah. One was being sold on consignment, an old airstream, I think it was, right near the dumpster. That wasn't suitable for anybody to live with. That was...
That was used for storage, right?
No, that was sold on consignment.
That was not one of the occupied ones?
No, they couldn't be occupied, but the...
So that left five...
And that's gone.
That left five that we know occupied. We know at least two were occupied and three were not at all.
No, they were not occupied, that's what I'm trying to say. There was another one that was briefly occupied by the woman who kinda got this all, they came onto the prop, police came onto the prop, that's another story, but they come onto my property like it was a terrorist training camp, you know, with assault weapons and guns and dogs, and on the second recurrence, but on the first recurrence, I helped the police by having her escorted off the property they were looking for. She returned a week later, unbeknownst to me, with an ankle bracelet, violated some type of alcohol.
Well, let's focus on the campers.
But that camper's gone through, and you've been out there, Jim. I don't know if anyone else has, just let me finish. So the two that are missing are the one way in the back near the dumpster, and then is your facing the barn, the second one, not the first one. Those are both removed, so.
You're talking about the airstream is gone, that should be gone because it wasn't occupied.
Yeah.
And, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, they were not all occupied, but the airstream is gone.
But we don't know whether or not they were all occupied at the time they went out.
The one that was occupied briefly by that woman that the police were looking for that started this whole situation, that one's gone. There's one that's been there for quite some time. I think the town may or may not have known about it. It was on, they came on the property years ago, let's say, right next to the back barn. That's always been there. That's used sometimes for guest residents, you know, for an emergency. My son used to use it.
On the, excuse me, on the day of inspection that we went out there, that camper next to the barn?
Right.
Towards the woods, are we talking?
Correct, that was the only one that was there at that time.
That's occupied, because there was a guy out there sitting on his deck drinking a beer or something.
Yeah, but it's not permanently occupied. The people staying, that's the boyfriend.
Which one you're speaking about, all the way in back?
The one near the...
No, no, I just wanted, because there's a deck on that one?
Yes, correct.
I don't know if there's a deck on that one. The deck is on the ones, the three...
There's one in the front.
Right.
I thought that one...
The one that the chairman is referring to, because I witnessed the same thing, is the one closest to the barn structure.
Yeah.
Which is in between the one that Clifford is referring to, is the one that was occupied by the woman who was arrested, and the barn. There was a gentleman there who we had a discussion with, who lived in Freetown, worked in Freetown, and said that he stayed there on occasion, and it was obvious at that point that he was staying there.
He visits with, my mother's helper, there's a CNA that Tori, and she takes care of my dog, she takes care of my mother, and she, he's the boyfriend of...
And the other fellow we met owned the...
Dave.
In the front camper, in the front lot.
He's Rhonda's handy person. He takes care of just about her landscape, and he takes care of repairs.
The permanent resident, right?
He's not a resident. He's, he lives elsewhere. I don't know what his exact address is. I believe it's in the Bedford, but I don't know if he's, I don't know his address. But he does do work there, he has his tools there. He, he may stay there on occasion, very briefly, but that's not his residence. So that's his...
Well, according to him, he's living there.
Place of the work.
Neither here.
I don't know what he told you, but you got a draw from whatever he told you. Did he say he lives there permanently? Because that's not true. That's not true. He's not a permanent resident there.
So that's one of them you spoke to, David?
Yes, so I, I'd like the record to show that that gentleman that we're speaking of admitted to me that he pays Clifford Wilson $650 a month to stay in that camper.
This is the fellow in the, where the three of them are?
This is the three campers. There were two that were empty but locked, and there was a third that has the deck on it, that has a fence around it. I also asked him why he fencing around this camper, and he indicated to me that's because that's, all of his belongings are at that camper, and he's protecting his belongings.
He doesn't pay me $650, right?
Just telling you when he's old.
He bought this with me for services, and that's, that's about $500 worth of services.
So he did also indicate to me, when I asked him, why were you concerned about your personal belongings? He said, I'm concerned about people coming on into the camper and taking my belongings. So I asked him again, who would those people be? And he said, other residents on the property.
Other residents on the property. My fam, maybe he doesn't trust my son, I don't know, but my family's there.
I don't know who he's referring to.
When the police came barrage in 50 miles an hour down my driveway, my 93-year-old mother was there, my grandchildren were there, my fiance is in fear of her life. I mean, she, she basically wanted to vacate the property. My cousin already vacated. It's just, it's a tragedy what's going on at my property. I'm just getting...
Well, you keep referring to that as your property.
Well, the property I reside at.
Okay. So you pay rent yourself?
My home.
You pay rent yourself?
My home, my home.
So it's your home?
I live there.
You reside there?
I reside there, with my...
But it's not your home?
With my family. It's the bank's home. It's always been the bank's home.
You all are in that situation.
The way the code reads is whoever has control of the property or whoever owns it. So when we go out to send a violation notice to someone, we find out who has control of it, or we go find the owner. So it looks like we're stuck here. But we're here to answer questions and try to work something out. I mean, you know, Mr. Wilson's lived there a long time. When he says there's a mortgage, it's not his mortgage, it's the corporation. But, you know, he asks if he pays rent, he pays the mortgage, it's his exchange.
And the taxes, which are the highest taxes, I believe, in Dayton. So you have control of that property?
Well, no, I'm not agreeing he's in control, but he lives there, and he's here willingly to try to work something out.
If you're here, if they want to ask me questions about the sanitary issues, I can swear on a stack of bios, and they can go do a soil analysis. There's no black water that's being dumped on that property, so I don't, I thought that was the concern.
I don't know if we could hear from the agent to see if he...
Well, the day we were out there, I didn't, the hoses were going into the woods.
Maybe somebody was dumping, might have been dumping.
And there were hoses, whether they were discharging, all hoses were connected to the five trailers.
If there was gray water being dumped, that's unbeknownst to me. Everything was being dumped, it should be dumped in, in white barrels. You may have seen a couple of barrels on the property, and it's transported...
Oh, one white barrel.
And that's transported in Bedford. I also have a septic, J and K Septic Company as well as another one, and they've offered, they've given quotes on pumping out the trailers themselves to make it easier. And I think next time I was gonna, I was actually gonna do that before this happened. And he, I was advised by them, that gray water, which we're dumping it together into the barrels, but I was advised by him that gray water is the equivalent of shower water washing your dog or your car or something. It's basically, could be dumped on the ground. I didn't know that gray water couldn't be dumped on soil.
That's the law. If there's nobody residing in these trailers, why reach out to a hauler to come for a, to come to the property to pump these trailers? And that seems wacky.
Like I said, they are, like I said, they are occasionally used, and they are up for sale, and people want to see them work, and, you know, I mean, it's a lot of variance here.
It wouldn't require a regular pump truck to come in.
Right, which is what I, which is an option I've been exploring. I just haven't...
That's a good point, Matt.
But that, that shows that there's heavy use of these units.
Well, no, I don't think they're there that often.
No.
What he has is the system...
What company did you use to pump?
You can verify the pumping, right?
J and K Sanitation. They were the last one I used. I've used other ones in between, depending who's giving, is a good price at that time, who's available.
And then they would pump them all at the same time?
Who's available. No, they haven't pumped them all at the same time. It's gone into barrels, but I have, I have, the next time I was gonna have them pumped, I was gonna have them, pay them $30 or whatever it was, one of the companies quoted, to pump each one, to pump each one individually. But black water has never been dumped on, on the property.
Well, you asked about the san, is there sanitary condition? One of them, right there, what you said is, you have to have a system that's contained or a system that's approved. You have, it looks like a campsite, a makeshift campsite.
Well, if you...
And you're not controlling any of that black water or gray water.
All I will say is, I took a drive down Williams Street, and I took photographs, and I got addresses of at least seven locations that have quarter acre yards and have anywhere between one and two RVs.
And you can always, you can send those calls to us, we'll go verify. But right now, we're talking about this.
Right, you could just drive around, I'm not gonna, I don't have to point.
But you can call us, and we'll, we'll go check on everyone.
I had to satisfy myself, and I get 10 acres, so the equivalent, I'd have like 40 campers if I was gonna put the equivalent on there.
Regardless, it sounds like you have a campsite.
I don't have a campsite.
You have campers lined up with black water or gray water going into containers, and you asked what the sanitary conditions were.
Each, each one of these RVs has their own holding tank. When, when they, they've reached capacity, which is very seldom, then it would be dumped into a container and transported off site. I was told by my septic guy that if I wanted to have him empty out each of the RVs, or take that block and dump it into my septic, I have two septics, that I could do that. But I'm here to, for the Board to tell me what I can do in the interim and what I can't do.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you have any records of that?
Yeah.
Because this, this hearing is your opportunity to be heard on the violation.
I can bring receipts of showing that when the septic were pumped, my septic was pumped, but...
All right, Ken, what about drinking water?
It's tied to the well.
So each, each one of the campers?
I have an entire, should I tell you?
Yeah.
I have an artesian well there. And incidentally, I regret objecting to the water tax bill being incorporated by people who are, that weren't, that had their own wells. I think that's what, I went on the bad side of the town a long time ago, because I objected to being put on a water, a water tax being put on my bill because I had my own well. But anyhow, I do have an artesian well there. There are two faucets at each, the back barn and my, and there's actually two faucets on my front, the front residence, one facing to the east and one facing to the south. The south faucet feeds the three RVs that were on that side of the property. The two, or actually the one now, that's in the back, near the back building, feeds off of that outside faucet, and that's, but it all, all that comes from...
And they're run by well water hose above ground on, on the surface?
Above, above ground.
Hoses.
Commercial grade drinking water hose, but, but yeah, it's above ground, and it all is fed by my, my artesian well.
Any of the occupants ever been there in the wintertime, where they would freeze?
No.
No.
Okay, I think I'll get to the point.
Sorry. If I can say a couple things with the chairman?
Sure.
Because I was there.
Sure.
I'd just like to respond to some of the comments that have just been made. I, I don't know if I need to cite my credentials for the record, but in addition to my current position as building official, I'm also an agent for the Board of Health, agent for the Board of Slackman, and I have a fairly wide background in Title V, 25 years minimum. The campers are hooked up to a holding tank, which is basically the equivalent of a plastic drum, above grade. There is an overflow discharge on each one of those drums that I follow that all go into some form of above grade discharge area, be it riprap or into the wood line or into some type of vegetation. So they're not completely self-contained. There is overflow discharge making its way to the surface. My, the potable water side of things, they, I agree with how they're hooked up to water services. However, I would refute that they're drinking water grade hoses, because those are distinctly marked. None of these were. And I also saw heat tape on several of the connections. So that would tell me that there are people residing in the campers, or at least the campers are being utilized in weather that could go below freezing, or else there wouldn't be any need for heat tape. All of the sewage, potable water, and electrical infrastructure, to my knowledge, have never been permitted nor inspected. So this town was not involved with any of that. So we don't know whether or not that stuff is code compliant. The Title V part of it, I think we all realize, is not code compliant, but I'm speaking directly to about the electrical part of the side or building code stuff. I witnessed, also witnessed inside the campers, at least two of them, I would agree that the one that the woman was, was living in who was arrested was not being resided in. The one closest to the barn was being used. There was obvious activity within it that showed that it was being used on a regular basis. The one that is being resided by the person you said who does chores around the property, I feel he lives there permanently. There was food on the kitchen table, there were dirty cooking dishes on the stove, the bed was slept in, and there was toilet paper refuse in the toilet area. The two additional campers that are in the area of the field where there are three were locked, but they did have sewage and water connections to them. I didn't get inside them.
If I could just comment on the heat tape, that is true, because that, that camper towards the back building, whether or not there's somebody living in it, as long as it's got a water source, and until I blow out the water out of those lines, it needs to be heat taped, otherwise the pipes could burst. So I've never denied that that one was heat taped. That's the only one that's heat taped. This has been there for quite a few years. As far as proving permanent residence with, with the handyman guy, Dave, that's, that's on the other RV, I've already said that he does stay there on occasion, but I don't know having food out proves that he's, that's not his permanent residence. So I don't know how to argue that. It's just, there probably is food. I haven't been in there. There probably is food out, there probably is something that would make it appear that somebody resides there, but that's not a permanent residence, so.
Here's what I think we're all looking for. At this point, there are some, it's a good setup. However, none of it is illegal. It's all non-compliant with state and local codes. Tell us how you're gonna bring this into compliance, and what are you gonna do?
Well...
Why we should amend this or rescind it.
I'd first like to ask what I can do to comply with, with the disposal of any... I'd first like to ask what I can do to comply with, with, with the disposal of any waste. Uh, if gray water is not allowed to touch soil, then obviously, then gray water has to continue to be contained before it goes into overflow and, and I'll pump it out on a regular, I'll have a, a septic, I'll contract with a septic, uh, either J and K or somebody else that gave me a better price and they do.
Still a lot in compliance with what we're talking about.
But that wouldn't be in compliance, I need, I, I need to know what would.
The prob- the problem is.
I need to do to be in.
Any, any trailer is considered temporary housing.
Which is what it is.
Yeah, the problem is, the state doesn't allow for temporary housing unless it's, say you have a fire in your house and your insurance company will put a trailer there, however, that's all permitted to the building apartment. They've come, they've pulled relevant permits to be able to tie into the existing on-site sewage system, the water system, that would be allowable as temporary housing. On a regular basis or whatever you got going out there, that, that, there's no necessity for temporary housing. So you can't have temporary housing.
It'd be, it'd be a hardship, the way the code goes, it's right here, in, in four thirty, temporary housing. It just says the Board, the, only the Board of Health can allow, uh, temporary housing, but it, you'd have to show some kind of.
Well, it, it, it is a hardship in the sense that I can't maintain that property by myself.
It, it, but the, but what you, what you mentioned is, you would be, the people would have to be displaced because of a fire, whatever it was, and they could stay on their property, but you'd have to you'd have to be in compliance while they're living there, so it'd be those, those larger trailers hooked up to the septic system, uh, but temporary, short basis. While you're, while you're working towards the goal, this, I don't know how long your friend or, or the, the person with the jaws, been there for a while. But what happens is with, with situations like this, i- it doesn't get any better, they stay, they stay, and I've seen it through my years doing housing inspections. They s- you, people set up in a, in a trailer and they never leave until they're, um, until they're pretty much forced to leave, cause the kitchen, conditions are, are terrible.
So does the board feel there's nothing he can do to comply, is that the, just as a?
Not with, not with uh temporary campers here.
We're talking, we're going into the winter season.
If we.
And, and you, you wanna house people with, when you have no place to put this uh sewage, you can't show, um, I don't even know how the electric is, is, is it wired? Oh, extension cords?
No, no, the electric actually was done by a professional, it appears to be, just didn't, wasn't.
And then all, you know, these, these, these units with the heating, we don't know if there's carbon monoxide smoke detectors in this?
They all have carbon monoxide detectors.
This is, this is temporary and, and I would never feel, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I can only speak for myself, to say, yes, we're going into the winter season. Go ahead and try to put this together.
We, we all, I think we all know there's RVs set up on, on work sites throughout, and, and uh, just, whether they're temporary or not, I've seen them there for years, uh, but I, I, the, the, the RV for my maintenance person, I, i- if he has to go.
I'm a little confused though, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm a little confused, then maybe you can correct this for me, you had said, there, none of them are occupied. You trade off with those, some chores and stuff.
For services, yeah.
Then you said, then you start saying financially I can't make it, are they occupied or not? Because if they're not occupied, you're not receiving money.
On a, on a, he, it's occupied on a, so we bought it for service, he gets to keep his RV there, he, he's built that from basically, you know, it didn't look like that when it went there. He, so he's, he's been remodeling and building it up.
He's put siding on this and everything.
Even John, John, John said on a temporary, short term, but he does, I've already said at the beginning of this con- this thing that he does stay there. Um, I don't know if his legal status is homeless or what have you, but, but he does stay, he stays at families' houses, he stays.
It's only one camper that I talked about?
On a regular basis, yeah, yeah.
He told me this is permanent housing, he's been there for at least three years, he has no other residents, all of his belongings are in that camper.
He's, I know his tools are, but he, he has, he has family and, and, but they, he doesn't live with them permanently, he stays over friends' houses, from, from what he had told me, I haven't talked to him in a while. He, he deals with.
You could put him up on one of your extra veterans or something. It's the same, it's the same thing with money, right?
He already have an occupant in the house.
It's okay to, I don't, I trust.
He had a family relative living there who's left.
He's, he.
Well, the person that came in, uh, later after we were there, said he resides in the house and he pays three hundred a month.
My, my cousin is gone, when they, when.
Oh, he's all, he's gone now?
He said, hi- his words to me, a bonafide came on the property when I wasn't there with, with, with a, with a whole team of, a SWAT team or whatever, he was armed with an assault rifle, he says, I'm done. He said, I can't stay here, and he, and he, he's gone, he was spooked out of there, and he's not an easy guy, he's got his big gun, two hundred and thirty caliber. You get somebody shaking with a gun in their hand, I, there was a gun pulled on me at my driveway when I helped escort that girl out, two, two, two weeks prior, the second visit. I worked with the police, helped get her off the property, my thanks, his partner pulls a gun on me while I'm coming on the driveway and he said, oh, I didn't know who you were, I'm like, Jesus. You know, I'm like, y- y- you know, this is very stressful, this is very stressful, all I'm doing is trying to.
It's stressful for a lot of people who are having financial problems, what if we let every home in the town of Dayton put one or two campers on it?
It's not a possibility.
They're all over the place.
It's not a possibility.
Well, again, one difference here is he's got twelve and a half acres, I mean, that's, and I understand the regulations, no, I understand that, but it's, it's a huge property.
All the minimum housing code.
Yeah.
And that's the minimum, and he doesn't meet, a couple of them already. And I, it's under seven fifty, and I don't know if you've done housing courts. It's the, it's the min- like I said, the minimum standard, and I don't think we could even say, you can be, you can live, sir, or we can, we'll let these occupants live abo- uh, below the minimum standards, I don't even think we have the authority to.
Can't do that, my concern.
It was a pretty nice campus.
I'd, I'd like to hear from, from the occupants, but we weren't able to, to get access to provide them information on the hearing, you're an occupant.
Potable water and sewage.
My, she was gonna leave, she, she threatened to leave me i- i- if the police came on the property again, she says, you can't.
We weren't talking about the police.
Huh?
We weren't talking about having the police come.
Well, John told me they would be accompanied by police again, and I'm like, that's, that's what I, I understood that they're gonna be pleased to live in.
Fact of the matter is, you're technically a tenant, the same way that this gentleman with, with this trailer is, in some form or another, there's clearly some exchange of whether it's services or money, wha- whatever, he's considered a tenant with that trailer there. Like you, you're able to come and do what you want, do what you need to do. We weren't able to get access to the property to let anyone else know about the hearing, for them to be able to come and let us know their feelings.
That's why I had asked.
So.
If we could, to, uh, my, my subdivision thing was put off for years, all I would ask is that they put this off for, to, maybe to
Nah, you can't put this off.
Another month or another week, a couple of weeks, so I can.
You know, you know if this gentleman has a mailing address, is a yard address, how does this gentleman get mail, we need to send a notification.
Nobody gets mail, yeah, so it's not him, uh, but what I would ask i- i- before we get ahead of ourselves is if there's a way that I can work with you guys for the temporary residence, to, to discharge by permanently or whatever, temporarily, whatever I gotta do, to, to, to make sure that the waste is disposed of properly on a temporary, you said it, it's a way to do it temporarily, and I'll do that.
I mean, I would like to help out here, and I think we can maybe come to a resi- how many, how many people are renting there now, how many are living in campers?
There's, they are at any time to, to.
Okay, you have two that are paying rent.
Chairman, I have to deject, this is a zoning violation as well.
Well, I understand. And that's what I was gonna do, before we do anything, yeah, we are gonna appeal, so we're not misleading the board. We had thirty days to appeal, we'll be appealing next week, I assume we'll be meeting in November, right?
My understanding that this was the seven day appeal, so that was.
Yeah, this was a shorter appeal.
We, we haven't discussed that council, so I just wanna make.
No, and we haven't appealed it yet, so, I wanted to make that clear, that there is that issue, yeah, to be addressed.
I see it as temporary housing and I don't, I don't see a hardship, you're, you know, there wasn't a fire at your house or anything like that, I, I can't allow it. Un- under the, under the state, state sanitary code.
Mr. Piers, Mr. Piers was gonna suggest something that I wanna work with the board, there are, there, there's campers.
Well, I, I wouldn't agree to anybody living in a camper outdoors, I'll tell you that in the beginning, and they gotta go as far as I'm concerned. However, your mother lives upstairs over the garage, right? Okay, and you got two people paying rent?
No.
In the campers, correct?
We, we bought it for, yeah, two people, we bought it, yeah.
You could temporarily solve your problem until you get rid of the campers, and I won't stand for anything less than that. You move your mother in the house, there's two apartments upstairs, right, Jim?
Yes.
You rent out an apartment over the barn, and you can bring two more people in the house to pay rent in the room.
It's, it's not so much.
Well, that's my.
Before you commit, I'll talk to you about it, yeah.
You can pretty much do what you wanna do with renting out your house.
Once you get three people, it's a boarding house.
Yeah.
You can have two people inside paying rent.
Yeah.
And you can put somebody above, there's, there's three people paying rent. That's the best I can do, and I don't even know if these guys would agree to that, but it's legal.
Can we get a zoning, uh?
Well, you're gonna get it, yeah, really.
So allow me a, a campsite or whatever it is.
Yeah, well, I can put an RV on, on my property, I, I, I pay eighteen thousand a year and I can't put three RVs on my property, I don't get it.
Do you wanna go outside first? Yes, Reese, yes, thanks. Okay, thanks.
That's fine, sure, will, will recess for five minutes then?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay. Dave, a recess?
Right.
Okay, also.
Okay. Yeah, the one thing he was gonna propose, and I understand there's a whole separate issue with the zoning board, and I've explained that to him. But if he were willing to, you know, properly construct it, pipe it, put it into his um Title Five septic system, bring the water properly, would the board consider that?
From what, the campers?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so the campers are just, there's no way to comply with the campers.
Campers gotta go, and actually, we're gonna be requesting the right to inspect once we come into compliance, if there is compliance.
Okay, but I guess that's my, what do you require for compliance?
I guess there'd be verification that they're.
Yeah.
Cause the order says to vacate.
Mm-hmm.
We need to verify they're vacating, or I'm gonna just say, please vacate and then not verify, we just wanna make sure. Again, it's for the safety of the occupants as well.
Well, that's, uh.
I think every chance should be disconnected.
And some kind of notification has to be sent to the, to these occupants that have their belongings there, is we can't just surprise them, they, they, we, we tried to, we made the attempt to go there and, and probably notify them, but.
Yeah, and that's.
We gotta, we gotta get them, you know, it's the only right thing to do.
If the police didn't storm into my property the way they did, I'd invite, the first time they called me, I worked with them open arms, I said, sure, what do you need me to do?
It's a public safety issue, you've testified you're not in exclusive control of the property and there's other people that live there, can't have a public safety situation where public safety officials are excluded from verifying compliance with requirements that apply to everyone.
All they, all they had to do is what they did the first time, called me and I would, I cooperated with them, the second time they came by surprise, driving down the driveway, or the third time, rather. Driving down the driveway at a high rate of speed, endangering my grandchildren's skis, my, if it were your family that were there, would you guys be empathetic to, come on back?
Yeah, my, my, my point, my only point, uh, i- i- if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that every dwelling in the town of Dayton needs to be uh, accessible to, you know, a, a, a health agent of the town.
They've already been on the property three times, I mean, I, I, I don't know what more I can do, it's just that every time they come, it gets worse, it's, it's, it's a.
I mean, I mean for knocking the door.
Huh?
I don't mean, I, I, I mean inaccessible in terms of a knock on the door, these trailers are totally inaccessible right now.
Isn't like every time we try to go there, we're denied access.
That was one time, you guys had been on the pro- not you personally, but.
That was the police department.
I don't know who was there the third time, I think.
And uh, from my understanding, you didn't wanna let them on the property, you sent that girl down to them.
The first time, they called me and they, they said, is she living on your property, and I cooperated, they say you're an arbitrary fugitive, I said, I don't even know she's a, I said, I'll, I'll bring her down for you.
See, that's why we don't know who's there and what's there, and I, if you are just renting, you don't know who's there either, do you?
I'm just, just trying to do your job and all you wanna do is knock on the door and say, hey, we, we heard of some violations, we wanna just verify, but you don't know of your own safety.
I, I, I know what's going on there.
Mr. Chairman, I want the record to show because I was present, and um the property, as council has indicated, is inaccessible, we know that at least five campers were on the property being, um, lived in, we don't know who the occupants are. The last time this town and public safety officials dealt with one of the tenants of those campers, she tried to run the police offices down. So, at the end of the day, the public safety officials in this town are gonna go home to their loved ones.
That's why I wanted her off the property.
So, I'm talking right now, so with that said, we had a police presence, we did not drive fifty miles around to the property, there were no children on the outside. We entered the property, I first went to the door with one police officer to make myself known, my presence known and my right to be there. I spoke very diligently, I was not disrespectful, I explained to the person, I presume it's your significant other, what we were going to do. I went on my way, we were not disrespectful to anybody else on the property, but at the end of the day, there was a police presence because we're all going to go home at night.
My cousin, if I could say one thing, I wasn't there the third time they came, I just heard from the people that were there, my family, and my cousin, he wanted out of there. He, he told me that he was approached by police, uh, w- w- one with an assault rifle, asking him if I dealt drugs. Looking around the property, hmm, nice place, your, your, your cousin deal drugs?
No, I, I don't know about those discussions.
Just to be clear, there were three separate occasions, the first one was, this woman on the property violated some term of probation. They called, Cliff said, we'll bring them to the gate, they went to the gate, she acted erratic, it's in the police report, that was part of the affidavit, and they ended up pulling guns and she tried to run them over, nothing to do with Mr. Wilson, second time, they accessed the property through the woods, I take it, cause they didn't ask you to come on, they just came there and arrested her and took her off the property, third time was with the warrant, um, so, but all that's aside, I mean.
The board's decision is the campers go.
Well, I think we're gonna have to pull the hearing first and then come home.
Well, actually, if, the campers can stay on the property.
The camp, I meant the.
But you gotta dismantle all the, uh, all the piping and the, whatever's been done for.
As far as the campers, I mean, like anybody else in this town, you're allowed to store your camper, or you and your, your, your child's camper, you know, your son's, whatever. I mean, that's why you can wind up with two, whatever, on, on your property, you can store them in your property, you can't live in them, you can't have other people living in them, that's just the way it is, it's the law. So, I mean, if, you, you keep the campers on, on the property, if that's okay as far as zoning, that's beyond us, but on our end, they can stay, they just have to be disconnected from the, the water and, and the gray water system, whatever you got going on there, and um.
Electrical.
Yep, the electrical, and we just need to verify via inspection that all of those trailers haven't vacated.
If I may just add just one piece to that.
Sure.
Is that might be true from like the Board of Health standpoint, but I think under the town zoning bylaws, there could be an issue with storage of multiple trailers.
Absolutely, that's why I said on, on our end and, and not, not zoning, cause that, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with the zoning laws, but.
But for us, a minimum housing code, we, and again, I don't think we could even say, we could, we could be below the minimum, it's impossible. That's why it's set that, that way, there's certain things people need to live, and you're missing two right now, that we know, we haven't even, I haven't, I haven't.
If I bring you guys in those RVs, the ones that I own.
But right now you're missing.
If you look in there, they're pretty nice.
Two of those are very key, so.
Two of those are what?
Very important, the water and the sewage.
I'd like the opportunity to, to maybe appeal and try to resolve the sewage, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I think the board's been clear, they're not, they don't believe there's anything they can do, and, I mean, you've offered the pipe and, you know, do it appropriately, but.
Unfortunately, the, the state sanitary code's a state sanitary code, and it was, there's nothing, we, we can't go below the state sanitary code, we can only go up at or above it. So to violate, to, to go against the state sanitary code, I mean, all three of us would be, would be liable.
We can be more stringent on codes, but we can't be less.
Yeah.
So. I don't know if we need a formal vote to keep the order in place? I think we, yeah.
I think that.
I'll close the hearing first.
Yeah.
Chairman, I make a motion to close the hearing, second.
The motion's made, second, and to close the hearing, any further discussion, seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the abstentions, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, uh, keep the order as, as written on October third, order to vacate at thirty-one forty-seven Shopzot Road. Second.
The motion made in second, and keep the order in force, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carries also. Are we gonna be allowed to go up there on the property or?
A lot are coming and coming, so they don't know yet, right?
I'll talk to Mr. Wilson, get back to you. Be in touch with Attorney Costa, or if you don't mind, then we'll go for that.
Yeah. Would there be any way to get, uh, um, some kind of, um, correspondence to the, uh, occupants, or, or addresses for them?
Uh, I wanna talk to Mr. Wilson about that. I, I don't know that he has any mailing addresses for them.
We can, uh, leave the notifications in their doors if.
Yeah, we really don't wanna go back, because we don't wanna show up for, uh, an inspection and the person's there still like, oh, I didn't know. We're just going backwards here. And just so you know, and I don't, I would never wanna go there, but these are actually finable offenses. When you see things that are discharged on the ground, or people, people knowingly have people residing in residences or establishments, uh, dwellings, with violations as such. You can, you can be fined. The first offense is a hundred dollars, then it can go to, continually go on.
Doubles.
Yeah.
You can actually hold crim- criminally.
And we haven't done that, uh, but to, to continue, just so, just so you know, to have, to go back and do an inspection, if somebody's still residing in there, would constitute a fine, definitely.
Uh, I wanna thank you for licensing the dog. I mean, it's a minor thing out of all the.
It's already licensed.
No, it wasn't.
We're on this.
It's licensed now, so it's vaccinated, so.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, last meeting, uh, going on to number four A. Last meeting through the health agents. Public input, I suppose, if you call it, uh, it was brought up about. Attempting to re- uh, recommend it to the Board of Selectmen for reimbursement of expenses in Fredrath Town. Property located at twenty-four seventy-seven Maple Swamp Road. I asked our Rosalind, our secretary, to add it to this week's agenda for another vote, uh, since it was an unagenda item last time, uh, to make it more official. Um, unless you wanna have some more discussion on it?
I would like to say something, because I was in here. I disagree with this wholeheartedly. We need to let this be done. I've talked to the town administrator about it. She wants it to be done. Just, if he signed all those dogs over to us, they were our property. We had to pay for them anyways. Just let it go. If I knocked on his door tomorrow and said, you owe us five thousand dollars, he probably would come up with it. But why? He's, we've hurt him, he's been hurt. We just need to let this go.
The other comments?
Um, what's the cost again?
I don't know what the cost is.
Three thousand, two thousand.
Three thousand, three hundred.
It's, right, but, he signed the dogs over to us so we could do what we needed to do with them, put them in foster care, or to euthanize them or whatever. At that point, it's our responsibility to do what we needed to do.
Let me ask you this, though.
Which budget did it come in?
Mine.
Let me ask you, in a, in a, in a different situation, when you, would you take, when you take the dog and you do this, would you?
No.
Try to get your money back?
No. Not if, not in this, not in this kind of situation, no. The only thing I would have gotten is if he, I returned the dogs to him, he would have paid boarding. But besides that, no.
So, the only time you've ever done that with another town resident is when, with the boarding?
Right. That's the only time I.
That's the time you tried to recoup, uh, or reimbursement?
Right. Right.
I believe we did have to supplement that budget with, uh, funds from another account at the end of the year, but it still was your budget.
That was last year's budget, yes.
That's last year's budget.
It's not gonna impact this year.
No.
Nope, not at all. Yeah, and I, and it, it's sad that this thing is still being talked about.
What do we got this year? Seven hundred?
Yes, I agree. From?
Thereabouts for this count, this fiscal year.
Oh, you mean even her budget line? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I don't know. It's more than that, I think, for care and custody.
I think we went up because we knew you were gonna have a place to be able to keep dogs, so.
Right.
What did the selectman say about this?
Uh, a member of our Board of Selectmen wants us to consider this. Uh, I do know that the town administrator had also indicated to me, uh, she did not wanna pursue it. Um, I don't know the position of the other two Board of Selectmen, but.
Yeah. I, based on what Stacy said, we never actually went back and, for reimbursement, unless it was boarding. I still can't believe we're still talking about this.
Yeah, no.
If, if this has not been a past practice to go after somebody for, for reimbursement, then, um, I would, I would side with you, Stacy.
Yeah.
So as long as, as long as it's been a past practice and will continue to be a practice, then, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
So do we need a motion for this then?
I think we had to rescind the motion, uh, from our last meeting, even though it was probably not a, a legal motion, because it was not an agenda item.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, make a motion to rescind.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, motion at the last meeting regarding reimbursement for, um, the, the property on Maple Swamp Road. Um, now we've had a chance to discuss the matter further days ago.
Okay. Second, second, okay. Motion made, second, and rescind the vote of, uh, whatever the last meeting date was.
October ninth.
Okay, October ninth. Uh.
Hold on.
You got it.
Okay.
No, to rescind the October ninth decision, vote?
Vote, vote.
Vote and decision, yeah.
Have to consider, whatever you said, have to consider it, you know?
Reconsideration.
Unconsidered.
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now a motion to, uh. I guess decline, not to recommend.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, motion made, and second, and not to recommend, um, seeking reimbursees, reimbursement of expenses for property located at twenty-seven Maple Swamp Road.
Twenty-four seventy-seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
All s- okay, carries. Thank you very much. Animal shelter project update. Pig's in there, right?
No, pig's not in the new shelter. The pig is not in the new shelter. The pig is in the old shelter. Thinking it's great.
Oh, good. And from my discussion we do last, we're gonna keep it seven days and then adopt it out, because there's some people wanting to adopt already. So, it is a pot-bellied pig, about a hundred twenty-five pounds.
Oh.
So it got big. Stacy had fun chasing it around, begging for three days.
I probably have one for Pat in the house.
So would you actually like an update, or?
Cause he knows I don't.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Yeah, how's he doing?
No, oh, pig is good. The shelter, I don't know. I haven't been in there.
Oh, yeah.
I see, I see the vehicles there, the town.
Oh, yeah, animal shelter update.
So the animal shelter project is going very well. Um, we, I don't know if I've actually given an update in the past, so. Uh, as some or some may not know, we relocated the trailers that were at the old police station to the, uh, transfer station. And we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. We matched that with a twenty-five thousand dollar special article, thanks to the taxpayers. And, uh, currently, we have installed a brand new roof on the entire, uh, trailer unit. We have, um, permanently affixed it to a foundation. We have put in a new electrical service, uh, and LED lighting that was finished today. All high-efficiency lighting. We painted it a wonderful aqua blue.
Oh, no, no.
But no, no, you got.
We had left over paint or something?
We had that left over.
No, no. I researched this and what it would be, what would be a good color for the, took me two hours, and you made up a, yeah, a calming color. It's a bluish, greenish color.
Rocking me, rocking me?
I did challenge her on the color, and she was quick to correct me and say, I spent the time, Jim, this is the color that we need to have, because it calms the animals down.
He did?
It fires me up, but it calms them down, so.
Aqua blue?
Oh, it is an aqua blue, yeah, yep. So anyway, but it looks nice. Um, I chose the flooring. You haven't seen it yet, but it looks very good.
Yes.
Um, that was finished. That's done. The decks have been put on. Uh, the ramp was put on. We have a front and rear entrance. The rear entrance is gonna be, uh, for Stacy. And then the front entrance will be the public, public accessible entrance. Um, we also put an extended deck on it with a, a loading area, so if she had to back up and take cages out, she has somewhat loading di- deck height. Um, the interior has been repetitioned to satisfy the needs. And next week, we should be starting to work on the plumbing. So, my hope is that by the middle of November, we can start to talk about ribbon cutting.
Oh, good.
Very good.
What color is the interior gonna be?
The interior is aqua blue.
It's the blue. It's the blue.
Oh, you didn't paint the exterior?
No. Yeah, exterior is white.
White.
Oh, I thought that's what you were talking about.
No, no, the room, the rooms that the animals are in, actually.
Will be aqua blue.
Oh, no, they are aqua blue. Yeah, they all are. The only, the only room that's different is Stacy's office, is.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with colors.
But it, it was well laid out. Stacy and I worked together. There's an area where, uh, if she's gonna have an animal adopted, they can go into an area where the dog or the cat can run around. Be with the people who are looking to adopt it. Um, it's, it's actually come out really nice.
Are their fines in an area for dog runs?
I think in the future, we can discuss that. It's not part of this project.
Yeah. Okay.
And just so this board knows also, um, I did not want the animal shelter to be part of the transfer station, so we're actually separating it via barriers. So there'll be a separate driveway and entrance, so that we don't have the possibility of members from the public, uh, up in the transfer station area with all of the equipment and refuse and whatnot, so.
All right.
All right.
Who's doing update on Bedford Street and health order and bond permit? That yours?
I haven't spoken to her recently. I do know.
We haven't received anything in the office.
When is the date for?
November twelfth is when she has to have everything off the property.
Well, the goats, not the chickens, right? Well, but, but she needs a bond permit to keep chickens.
Good box, right. Right.
Did she get the bond permit or?
No, no.
Yes, applied, but she can't get it because she still owes money from our transfer station contract, so.
I wonder if anybody wanted to give her a jingle, or a phone?
Uh, 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 I'll talk to her.
Maybe.
Could you give her a push?
Yeah, I'll.
Yeah, just a, just a reminder, maybe it'll be so busy.
If I'm called, it's gonna come quick, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stacy.
We don't have anything in place for fines for a bond permit, I don't believe either, you know, so. Okay. Try to get that this week.
I'll talk to her probably tomorrow.
Okay, good. Bailey Street bond permit. Same thing, right? Cow, there's a cow there, by the way.
Yeah. There's a cow on the property. Um, I have not, I don't think we've heard anything. I'm just gonna go knock on the door.
I can go with you if you want.
Um, and see what they, what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, because of this, something came up. The AI Commission would like to see as many of the Board of Health come to their next meeting. Um, because part of that was because of this cow being on this.
Yeah, what was it, the nineteenth, what day did you say?
It's the nineteenth at seven.
Okay.
I can't make it, it's my late night at work, but.
So.
That's good.
And my favorite, number four E, not date health concerns, I guess, uh. What do we call?
Large mice?
No, uh.
Bitters.
Or, or.
Pest control?
Mr. Ferry, what's his title on this?
I think it's pest control or something like that, man.
Pest control, yeah.
I don't know.
I, I guess he's waiting for one of us to go with him, show him what it's like.
Traps. Yeah, he wants to know exactly where to suck the traps, because there's other animals, like cats in the neighborhood, and he wants to make sure we don't accidentally catch something.
Maybe we can do that Thursday?
Tomorrow, and?
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow, him and I. Oh, and you, one P M.
One o'clock, yep. I have a park in the morning, but I'll be available.
Okay, then maybe we can go up there at that time and put a few traps around. Any suggestions?
The barns, probably somewhere in the barns. I didn't go in the barn, uh.
Back to Bailey Street, yeah. Not Bailey, it's, uh, Bedford.
Yeah. Bedford. Um, I didn't go, I went into the house. I didn't go into the other structures, so I would say.
I think anywhere around up there, around those buildings, uh, would be a good place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Possibly in that garage, I think might work, yeah.
Yeah. So we can do that tomorrow, right after we meet, and, uh, okay. Two fourteen Pearl Street, F, four F, update?
Uh, last time he was here, uh, he said, yes, he could go in, fix the electricity, just know because, have they, uh, have they filed for an electrical permit yet?
Where's this, I'm sorry.
Two fourteen Pearl.
They have not.
So was, they still haven't filed for a permit, so nobody's, and they have driven by, there's still nothing going on, so.
Okay. Well, there, I'd like to get that address off here, but, uh.
Soon.
It will, yeah, it happens.
Soon, yeah. Any public input? Everybody left?
No public, but I did.
No.
Holy smokes.
I'm not gonna read it.
Oh, it's not bad. Hard a little, I mean. With Mass DOT one first. Uh, Route forty-four, Men's Street, roadway improvement project. Request for access to private property on Route forty-four. Dear property owner. Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division, Mass DOT has determined that it may be necessary to perform field observation, wetland delineation, related activities at the property in connection with planned highway improvements in your area. This may include tying flags on wetland vegetation and examining soil conditions. Mass DOT is proceeding pursuant to general laws, chapter six, section three twenty-four, which allows Mass DOT and its agents to enter upon private property after thirty days notice of. Notice, well, for purpose of making surveys and examinations, unquote. In this case, staff from our consultant, uh, Eppelson Associates will be performing the wetland activities. We anticipate these ac- activities can be completed in a few days unless delayed by weather. Please feel free to contact Environmental Project Manager Andrea Coats at five oh eight 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 four four two one seven with any questions. Thank you for your assistance in the matter. I greatly appreciate cooperation. Every effort will be made to minimize any inconvenience to you. Sincerely, Susan MacArthur, the Mass DOT Wetlands Supervisor.
It's not that whole thing, it's the Johnson and Johnson recall, but.
Yep. Just figure out where we're at, yeah.
Sorry, I usually kinda like that.
Next one.
And, uh, as regards to a recall. Out of, out of an abundance of caution, Johnson Johnson Consumer Inc., J J C I, announced that it is initiating a voluntary recall in the U S of a single lot of its Johnson's Baby Powder in response to U S F D A testing. Indicating the presence, presence of subtraced levels of chrysotile asbestos contamination, no greater than point zero 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 two percent. In samples from a single bottle purchased from an online retailer. Despite the low levels reported, and in full cooperation and collaboration with the F D A, J J C I is initiating this voluntary recall of lot number two two three one eight R B. Johnson's Baby Powder, from which the tested sample was taken. That's, uh, that's about it.
What is, uh, all those points? That's like ten thousand, so. Two ten thousands or something like that?
Two hundred thousands.
Is it? Oh, okay.
Thousand, double percent. You done?
Well, thanks for reading.
I'm done.
Yeah. Payroll and bills?
You don't have any?
No.
Okay, next one. Any more to report?
Besides that, I have a pig.
Yes.
Um, it is hunting season, for all that don't know. Um, right now it's just bow and arrow. I've had a few call, I've had a few dead deer, um, hit on the road. So be careful. They're out and about and moving. And also, I had a call of a headless deer. That somebody had shot. We found out it was all illegal in the end, but, um.
Was that on Cedar?
No.
There was one on Cedar, that's.
It, we don't have a waste and wa- a wanton waste law in the state of Massachusetts. So what ended up happening is somebody shot this on opening day in eight-point buck, couldn't find it. It was very warm on that day. When he did find it, it was bloated and couldn't salvage the meat. He then called the E P O and told them what had happened, and said, all I really want is the rack on the head. The next day, he sent somebody out to cut off its head to get the rack. Um, Hunter saw that and, of course, was all upset, which I don't blame them, so, um, myself and the E P O and a few police officers went, and we got it all straightened out. So, um, it is legal in the state to do that, which I did not know. So, yeah.
We could just leave the rest there, huh?
Yes, you could just leave the rest there.
Coyotes will take care of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say coyotes will take care of it. Um, but I've had.
Circle of life.
In the past, four.
You're, you're introducing.
Those singing.
Four.
Yeah, encouraging.
For seven, for the last seven days, I've had four or five deer hit by cars, so.
Yeah, that was Cedar.
I had a couple on Center. I had some on, on thirty-eight.
Oh, so.
Um, some get hit and walk away, some don't fare so well. So they are out there, so be careful driving for the next month or so. They will be moving. So they are out there, so be careful driving for the next month or so, they will be moving.
For anyone who hasn't hidden a deer, I've hidden three, I have a place in Maine, so they're all over, it's not fun, it's pretty scary. So just slow down and be careful.
Yeah, everywhere, every time I, for some reason, every time I drive down Tree Mountain Street at night, I think one's gonna jump out.
Yeah, they eat in that field.
Cedar's a good street too, Phil.
Yeah. I could have smiled, saw one the other day, some guy walked up to it, that's why, when I drove by.
Oh, yes, my son picked it up.
Yeah, when I drove by, I was like, was that a deer?
Yeah, my son picked it up.
Okay, well, thank you for the report.
South Asian? I just have one thing, um, we have somebody submit a septic system for a three-bedroom house and these are the floor plan, there's only two copies, and these are the floor plans that were submitted. What you're looking at right now is the first floor, you'll see in the bottom right corner, you'll see a den slash dining room that uh has windows, a door, um, it appears to have privacy. Um, if you flip the page to the second floor, you'll see three bedrooms up there and then again in the bottom right corner, you'll see an office which again has windows, a door, and a closet, even not that the closet's part of the definition. But I felt that these were both bedrooms by the Title V definition, um, the proposed uh builder challenged that and uh building inspector was dragged into the discussion also and he agreed with my assessment that they were considered bedrooms and needed to be addressed as such. I just wanted the board to reaffirm or tell me that we're wrong and they're not bedrooms. Um, but he is willing to uh put a three-bedroom D restriction on his property. Um, because as far as he's concerned, they are not gonna be used as bedrooms and he's willing to put the D restriction on and then so two parts, number one is confirm for me that my interpretation is right and you're supporting me and then number two is are we okay with bedroom D restrictions in these instances?
I I feel the same way, cause it, cause it means the privacy one, so it's either the one, the one window, the privacy, or the the height and the the square footage.
Yeah, the height shape for you, huh?
Some people have opened up the casing.
Seven feet.
Of the door.
Yep.
Where, they can always put it back later, but we're not gonna be the door police, but if you saw the open casing, where it's harder to put a.
Yep.
Uh, unless you put the French doors, that eliminates the privacy, but I actually like that idea where if they're saying it it's only gonna be this, then then record it as such.
And right now, he's going to.
But I'd rather, I'd rather see them try to make the attempt of eliminate the privacy if they could.
Well, that's the new discussion.
So I feel very strongly about this, I actually had exchanged a few words with this builder because it's obviously a five-bedroom house.
Yes.
Um, and I didn't like to have my intelligence insulted as such. So I'm gonna tell you right now, if you don't do a D restriction, this is not a threat, I'm not issuing a building permit, so.
No, I I I totally, I I agree that they are definitely meet the definition of a bedroom and at a minimum, they should file a D restriction.
A lot of people are pushing it more and more, it's just a gym, yeah.
Yeah, and it takes, it takes the liability, I think a lot of times what happens is they don't file a D restriction, next thing you know, the house is on the market in five, ten years as a five-bedroom house and they come looking at us, well, well, why, hey, look.
Exactly.
This, this was the discussion that happened, here's the D restriction, it's recorded, as soon as someone does a title search, it's gonna flag it
Exactly.
and uh it takes the liability off of us, that's it.
Thank you.
I mean, as far as the office, I can understand the door on on an office, that den and dining.
I don't know, that, it could be open, that then.
I I truly believe that that should not have a door on it, but.
Well, the other part of the definition, if you count the total rooms, and now we've got all these great rooms where kitchen, dining room, living room, one-on-one rooms, so it gets a little blurred on how many rooms.
Did you end up doing the, what is the count on this one?
It was only seven, I think.
Did you not count hallways?
So three and a half.
Cause if I said living, breakfast nook, dining, balcony, upstairs, or then.
Right, four, so.
Right, so. And five rooms, that's.
One, two, three, four, five, and then he's got four upstairs, so it was nine, so it's a four-bedroom house.
Divided by two, divided.
If if you take it and break the breakfast nook and the dining area, the kitchen, there's three different rooms, so.
So I, see, I. That is three different rooms, right?
Well, it's all, there's no wall.
It's no wall, so I have an issue with that, because now if you'd use the formula part of Title V, that should clearly be at least a four-bedroom septic system.
Well, the definite, what's the definition of a room, do you need a wall? I'm not trying to be.
Todd, you looked at the floor plan.
No, it's a four, I I agree, there's five rooms that are bedrooms, yeah, so.
Todd, and today is the the space to put a four-bedroom system, is that a possibility?
Yes.
Yes, they can put a four-bedroom system. And then that that alleviates a whole load of things going forward.
Well, that was the discussion I had with him today, I said, well, you know what, well, even Ross pointed out, it's like, how much is it gonna cost to add another bedroom to a septic?
Oh, they're doing a septic dam?
On a brand-new house, yes.
Oh, what the heck?
Right, well, that's what he said, and it's like, you know what, why don't you just go for big, and in the twenty-year plan, you'll be happy.
Why would we do?
And if it is a three, your your system's gonna last longer.
Why would we do a new construction, new construction?
New construction.
Why would you do a D restriction already on a new construction?
That's what I tried to.
Cause they don't wanna alter the floor plan and I'm not gonna issue a building plan.
The resale value would be a lot more too, huh?
That's fine.
That's why I brought it here, it's like, this was not a typical arguing discussion, most people, it's like, okay, they add more, another bedroom with the septic or whatever, they, it was.
Yeah, now's the time to do it. I'm actually, I still have to have the fifth, the the restriction on the four bedrooms, cause it doesn't. I'm a little perplexed as to why this is even a discussion.
I wanted the board to confirm that these are bedrooms and that.
I just don't understand what's going on with this builder, why, why all the fuss with this builder, I'm really need to understand this. Because adding a bedroom adds ten percent of the cost of a septic, we're talking about minuscule amount of money when you're building a three-hundred thousand dollar house.
Yep.
I just don't understand it.
Yeah, I didn't know it was a construction, my god.
Either, either does Todd.
Make me understand, just the chairman, make me understand.
Either does Todd, and that, either do we.
You can, you can mention to him, say, this, hey, the other way to do it, obviously, we see five rooms.
Well, they meet the definition of a bed.
But the other way to do it is when you divide these rooms, and I would count those as separate rooms, cause they're labeled as separate rooms.
Right.
So you divide that and it comes out to whatever the math was, eight, four?
Four.
So technically, you have to, you have to design it for four now. However, since you got the fifth, it would be recorded, that's my opinion. Is there a nitrogen loading restriction there, is there a wellhead protection or anything, then this is a new point.
No, but he's. He he's got, it's an estate law, so he's got like eight acres anywhere or whatever, so this is not, this.
But when they.
You're gonna, you're gonna benefit from this in the future.
I don't know, I can't explain why you're gonna do it.
Have a four-bedroom house.
Your your resale is much, much higher.
I can't explain it.
What, what they're designed?
So I, uh, we can't take a form of votes, it's uh.
Oh, yeah, I didn't need a vote, I just wanted the board to know what I was doing, what Jim was supporting me on and just so that, you know.
You will.
We can't vote, so okay.
At least in this afternoon, though, when it sounds like they're not.
It's the second time my blood pressure's come up for this thing.
I mean, I I would, I would just suggest to them that, hey, based on the room account.
It's Jim Hall, he should've.
You know, the the uh, the system really needs to be designed for a four-bedroom, again with the D restriction, because that appears that it's five. Should they only want a four-bedroom without a D restriction, they need to make an alteration to at least that den slash dining. Remove the door, widen, widen the opening a little bit.
Right. Right.
And then they don't have to do a D restriction, they get better resale in a a longer lasting septic system.
This, this, they would benefit from that. Thank you. They would have a four-bedroom, they'd have a four-bedroom house, imagine they having a four-bedroom house and a den.
That sum it up? If they have questions, like.
Well, say, they've been friendly about it, they've just been argumentative, that's all, and I just wanted the board to support that, so.
Just so they can say, it doesn't make any sense, and I have a hard time rationalizing the things that don't make sense.
And I, sorry, if I was building a new home and I was told to me, I would certainly be building a system for four or five bedrooms, probably five because of resale value.
Absolutely, I'd be over, overdesigning the system because in the end, it's gonna last longer if it's overdesigned.
Okay, I think we talked about it enough then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Anything else for you?
Nope.
Okay. It was on top of twenty-three twenty-one Phil Stone Drive.
I haven't been by there.
I haven't been by there either.
Last time I knew, there wasn't much fencing up, we've gotta give him some guideline on when this, some of the basic fencing needs to be done because he could take this out forever and I ever get a kind of part of license.
I thought we did give him a timeline, we did, we gave him a timeline of, of.
Let's go back in a minute, no?
Yeah.
The interior fence should've been done.
You're right, that's what I'm saying, and I'm pretty sure it's not.
Yeah.
I thought it was like, we're meeting, it was like a proper member or something.
I guess we can always look and.
It's, cause it it's a substantial amount of time, he needed some time, but.
Yeah, I remember we did.
Well, the outside fence, but the inside fence, right first.
But he was gonna hook a chain when he got to sit.
I'll go up there tomorrow.
And because.
Four, four minutes, I'll see what's, I'm ninety-nine percent sure we put a time, time in there. No, I'll get it, I think.
No, it's October.
Yeah, it was end of August.
Prove a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm good, Tim.
Uh, do you wanna read?
Yeah.
Room of the fence?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't love that.
Next, next, well, they're, they're not on earth, so we can't.
Look, today's the first day the telephone stopped working, okay?
The other day tonight, everybody was.
Offices are very busy, aren't they?
I tried to call, I tried to call three times yesterday, she didn't, it's a screaming phone?
It's been super busy, it's been crazy.
Screaming call.
Yeah, they, they were all being followed this afternoon.
It's not easy.
She doesn't even answer my call, and I'm only upstairs.
Okay, anybody else have anything else?
I have, I have one thing.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yep, uh, the um, State did their quarterly call down Trail September thirtieth. I did try to log in, unfortunately, our password was declined.
It seems like it's always declined, I.
So, I did mention it before I stormed off in a huffy, uh, last Tuesday um, to to Lisa that uh it'd be reset, so we'll coordinate that for going forward, but.
Thank you.
Just that was she and Kim, we were.
But it seems like it's like, whatever the password is, after like a month, it times out and you have to reset or something, cause we, we, we know we password and it doesn't work.
I know, I missed.
So.
Okay, all right, I don't know, you had something?
Yeah, I have something real quick, I don't know if you guys got my email, I was, I was gonna put that binder together.
Oh, for the regulations.
Yeah, so I asked, just get some supplies, if you saw that email.
We already have a binder, it's all done.
You have everything done already? Okay, with the tabs and all that stuff?
As we've been telling, they put it, doesn't have tabs, it's just, it's alphabetical order, the binder. So if you wanna take a look at it and tell me.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, and it's like, and you can actually like, I have the housing code here, you had the, even the housing code, all the codes.
Oh, okay, I have.
Yeah, we just never all have something there.
So you put the soil code one, we'll put the body out, we'll put the tanning, we'll put the food code. So when you, when you, when you need to reference something, you just go right to the code.
Okay.
And then, uh, Tom, last.
The uh, the two letters that we were going to, we got a kennel and, um, we thought they were addressed and.
Yeah, so, so I looked in our bylaws, so this is where I get that from, I was gonna run it by our attorney, but uh, you already, you had said you already checked.
Yep.
So in our non-criminal disposition, I can pass this along to you guys, I'll make one copy. Uh, but this gives us the authority to, with a non-criminal disposition, this is how we have the authority to actually issue a ticket or a fine. So under our non-criminal disposition, and it's just this one sentence really, whoever violates any provisions of these bylaws or any rules or any regulations, so in two thousand eighteen, we have to go back and add this word, regulations.